Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome tonight. Never ceases to amaze me how fast every other Monday rolls around. Where does my life go? But um. We're going to start tonight with uh. One of the favorite parts of these board meetings is our recognitions and celebrations. So tonight we have representatives from two different schools. Going to stand before us or sit before us, whatever, and tell us your story. So I believe Nicole Rapp is going to do the first one.
Thank you Chairman Christopherson Superintendent Hensley trustees. It is my pleasure to introduce Evansville Elementary. Could Evansville please join me behind me? This year Evansville Elementary achieved the highest level on the state accountability model. They moved from meeting, excuse me, to exceeding expectations. At the heart of this success is a staff who believe deeply in the potential of every child. High expectations are evident in every classroom. It's a place where teachers and staff pair belief in their students with skilled effective instruction. This has allowed Evansville to truly soar. A powerful testament to the staff's dedication and unwavering commitment to student success. And with that, I am very pleased to introduce the principal of Evansville Elementary, Mrs. Stacy Moore.
Good evening Chairman Christopherson Superintendent Hensley and Board of Trustees. We are so proud and so excited to be here tonight. Thank you for celebrating our students, our staff, our community. They have worked very hard. As a staff, we have been working hard to align our resources, to really grow through vertical alignment. And really look at how do we support students every day through our systems and our processes, ensuring that every student knows they can succeed and that they will succeed. So they believe in themselves, knowing that we believe in them. We're very proud of them and all the work they've done and just huge, huge kudos to our community.
Charlotte, are you going to bring up the next school? Guess I should call you Dr. Gilbar. You earned it right.
Good evening Chairman Christopherson Superintendent Hensley and trustees. It is with great pride and excitement that we're going to celebrate the remarkable progress of Pineview Elementary. They have made, that they have made in the performance under the Wyoming Accountability Model. Through a collective effort from dedicated educators, staffs, students and the community, Pineview has not only met the expectations set forth by the state, but has surpassed them by earning the recognition of exceeding the standards in several key areas. This accomplishment was achieved in only four years by moving a designation each year since the year of 2022. This pathway of continuous improvement was one of the reasons that Pineview was highlighted in the press release and conference by the Wyoming Department of Education around accountability and achievement. This is a testament to the hard work and commitment to excellence demonstrated by everyone involved. Under the leadership of Principal Chris Britt, the team continues to implement instructional strategies that are aligned to the grade level standards. This work fosters an environment of support and encouragement for all students. Pineview has exemplified what can be accomplished when a school all works together with a shared vision for student success. We are incredibly proud of Pineview's journey and look forward to celebrating the hard work that has led to this outstanding outcome. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Britt to introduce her team.
Chairman Superintendent and trustees, thanks for having us here tonight. I'd like to introduce you to my team. Ashley Allers, fifth grade. Hillary Barrett, tutor. Mary Ann Rowe, instructional facilitator. Rachel Winkler, third grade. Jason Armstrong, intermediate gifted and talented and I guess primary too, she teach them all. Renee Arner, first grade. Patrick Weiss, special education and Zach Lay, fifth grade. This is the group that I always bring and like I said at the last board steering committee, we will see you next year when we do this again. But I have a couple of people that would like to say something to you guys. So thank you for your time.
All right. Hi, everybody. I'm Jason Armstrong again. I just wanted to take a moment to recognize the staff that is not here. Our staff works really hard and they work really well together. And this has been quite a process. We've had to do a lot of self-examination and have a lot of hard conversations with people of what we need to change to make growth, the growth that we have made. And so, and they're just, they're a great group of people. They're fully invested. I know when we talked this year about exceeding expectations, you know, some of them got tears in their eyes. They were so happy for the students and what they had achieved. So I just needed to take a moment to talk to you about, you know, the rest of our staff because they are wonderful, wonderful people and you should be proud to have them working for you.
Good evening Chairman Christopherson Superintendent Hensley and Board of Trustees. Just some more major factors that contribute to Pineview. It's not just the staff, his families. We wanted to say thank you to the families for the support involvement in the last few years that have been put into our school. You guys have played a vital role in our success and because of Pineview is more than a school, is a thriving community with growth, achievement and exceeding expectations. And most importantly, we can't forget the students, the ones that are there doing the thing and working hardest. They truly deserve to be celebrated, not only for their accomplishments, but for their love of learning they show each and every day. They come eager to grow, driven to push themselves further and willing to embrace rigorous and challenging work before them. They have brought, bought into the intensity of this journey and through their dedication, they have proven that exceeding expectation is not just possible, but a reflection of actually who they are. Congratulations to all those amazing students. Their learning dedication and aspirations to be the very best. For all of us at Pineview Elementary, we are all proud of you students at Pineview. And what makes this even more exciting is knowing that for our students, they know that this is only the beginning for them.
Just for you and the audience, I don't know if you know how remarkable that is to have an exceeding expectation school, how much work goes into that. So yeah, kudos for that, those two schools. We do have another school that has met expectations. We. Next meeting, alright. So I would take a motion to set the agenda. Second. Any changes or additions to the agenda tonight? Seeing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed? Passes unanimously. Alright, we've come to the time in our meeting when we like to hear from the from the public. I have something that I read last time. I just, this has been a kind of a weird week, especially with what happened to Charlie Kirk and and I just, I just wonder how that we have gotten in America to the point where there's so much anger out there. So I would just ask tonight, just in honor of Charlie, that when you talk to the board, just, just remember that do it the way that he would, that you know, the love of Christ and and remember we're all trying for the same things. We're all trying for the advancement and the betterment of our students. And keep love in your heart, especially tonight. So come forward and please state your name and where you live so we can get ahold of you if you have questions and keep it to three minutes, please.
Hi, I'm Jeanette Ward and I live in Casper. It is alleged that a custodian in our district is requiring elementary students to address him as she slash her, although that does not correspond to biological reality. In response to the situation, a concerned mom made a post on social media with her concerns and an article was written in the newspaper. Before I begin, I'd like to remind the trustees seated here tonight that Wyoming law and the First Amendment protects my right to mention trustees who are elected by we the people by name. In the article, it was reported that trustee Howie said, quote, "I can't believe all the people I know that agreed with her. The superintendent and the district did step in to make a plan to help protect this custodian. God help that parent or me the next time I see her." I have some questions. The district is protecting the custodian, not the student. That's the first thought that came to trustee Howie's mind, protecting the custodian. Then trustee Howie threatened a parent. Just what did she mean by God help me or God help her or me the next time I see her? How is this acceptable? Perhaps trustee Howie would like to elaborate on what kind of help God will need to provide to this concerned mom when trustee Howie runs into her. This kind of disdain for the citizens of this district who elected her is unacceptable and trustee Howie should resign.
Thank you, Ms. Ward.
Trustee Christopherson. I have, no.
You have comments at the end, so. Leave it for that.
Just checking.
Okay.
My name is Dustin. I live in Casper. I am a father of a student in school. I have major issues with trustee Howie and making public threats through the newspaper. I don't know what her intentions were on how, what form of physical harm she has planning. It's unacceptable. We will not tolerate it. And I'm asking for her immediate resignation. That is not how you need this school board representative. There's absolutely zero call for a public threat. And I expect you to resign tonight. I do know people, lawyers that have already stepped up and are willing to go forward. It's unacceptable and you chairman should have already headed this off. You knew that that article came out. You should have stepped up ahead of time. There's absolutely no call for a public threat from a school board to a parent. And I fully expect a resignation. And I guarantee that there are tons of people that may not be sitting here, but they will back me that there's no place in our public schools for the authority to be acting that way. Our job as parents, school boards, teachers is to take these kids and teach them how to act. We're trying to grow the children, not show them how not to act. That's all.
Thank you Dustin.
Good evening. My name's Alora Tuft and I'm a Casper resident here. Tonight I'm here as the high school case manager for the Gear Up program. Tonight marks the beginning of National Gear Up Week, which is a week where we celebrate our program and our purpose of motivating students to reach their fullest potential through education and encouraging success in all areas of their lives. To share a bit about what we do, gaining early awareness and readiness for undergraduate programs, Gear Up is a federally funded statewide grant in Wyoming that provides services to 2007th through 12th grade income eligible students annually. Two hundred and ninety-one of those students are right here in Nitrona County. The goal of our program is to increase the number of students who are prepared to enter and succeed in post-secondary education. This year Gear Up is also celebrating its twentieth anniversary in Wyoming and the impact of serving students since 2005. In our last grant cycle, 2017 to 2024, Gear Up helped 96% of its students graduate high school and to attend schools in 36 different states. Students also earned a total of $13.6 million in Gear Up and Hathaway scholarships. And here in Nitrona County, our students meet with case managers monthly to discuss college readiness topics and to receive guidance on choosing a path that's right for them. Our students and their families also enjoy events like FAFSA completion night, family dinners and financial aid scavenger hunts. Programs like Gear Up expand opportunities for students and families and foster collaboration between schools, state agencies, industry and community organizations. Taxpayers see a return on investment in the contributions our students make as successful adults and in the $4,019,424 in matched non-federal funding that is captured each year. I invite you to celebrate this week with us to take the time to acknowledge the students in your life, the success that they've found and the potential that lies ahead of them. If Gear Up has made a difference in your life or the lives of those around you, I encourage you to share that impact with our community and with our state representatives. The work we do is valuable and it wouldn't be possible without the demonstrated support and collaboration as we all work towards a common goal, helping our students grow and thrive. I also want to extend a heartfelt thank you to the board and to all staff and administration in Nitrona County for allowing us into your schools, for the work that you do with our students and for your continued support of our program. Our mission wouldn't be possible without you and we look forward to maintaining this partnership in the coming years. Thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Tuft.
My name is Genevieve Hugo. And I stand before you as a desperate parent begging for your help. This is my son Hayden. He's an eight-year-old. He's in third grade at Cottonwood. He has a social and emotional disability and has an IEP. I had to fight by filing a complaint with the Wyoming Department of Education in 2023 to get that. If you've talked to people that took the time to get to know him and have worked with him daily, they will tell you that he's sweet, caring, loving, helpful, funny boy. They will also tell you that he needs to be taught social skills and boundaries. He's a hugger. And he doesn't know his own strength or how big he is. He has made tremendous progress due to some amazing people that have taken the time to get to know him and help him using conscious discipline. In only four short weeks, his IEP isn't being followed, his rights are being violated. And I've done everything I can to resolve this with the school level, sped leadership and then the superintendent. Two days after reporting my concerns to the superintendent, the principal contacted the RSO and the police. A police report was filed against my eight-year-old. Two days after that, the RSO was contacted again and another police report was filed. I was told this is district policy when someone gets hurt. But my son was held and kicked in the stomach in front of staff on 9/8. And he stated that it was hard to breathe. No one took him to the nurse. I wasn't notified. And in fact, I had to notify the principal when he got home. And no RSO was called to help him again on 9/12. He came home with bruises. And I was not notified and again had to notify the principal. And again, no RSO was contacted to help him. I have been told that other parents have received help from people in the district, but when I reach out to them, nobody will help me. So tell me why my son isn't good enough to help.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak to the board tonight?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board members. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I just want to raise a few issues on this issue that has come up with Crest Hill Elementary and some of the things that have been said and spoken about out there.
Did you give us your name?
Oh, sorry. My bad. Tony Locke, I'm a resident of Casper. Thank you, and I apologize for that. I just want to speak to a few issues related to this. And first of all, a little reminder to everybody here at this board and everybody in this room, we've got to remember that these schools are here for one reason, our children. These schools aren't built for the administration, the staff, the teachers or anybody else. They're here for the teacher. Or excuse me, they're here for, they were built and they were put in place for the children. End of story. So starting off with just this issue in general, the fact that there's any level of indoctrination being allowed to happen. It doesn't matter whether it was the individual, whether it was any teachers or others. I don't know that, but the fact that there's any indoctrination being allowed to happen in our schools is unacceptable if you think about that, just for a moment. Because this is, if one individual is saying we need to call this biological male or female, we're teaching our children to lie. And that should be a despicable thought to everybody in this room, everybody in this board in front of me and everybody in this room. And it needs to be addressed from that perspective. That is not acceptable for us to allow that. The second thing is the obvious threat to the public to a, to a parent who is voicing a concern. Again, I think that's been hit pretty hard, but that is really not acceptable. And the next issue I'd like to raise is, I'm going to go back to my first point. It is so obvious in that statement and threat that the priority is to protect this individual who by the way is indoctrinating our children if they're asking them to call them by a different pronoun. Stop and think about how confusing that is to elementary children. It is ridiculous for us to be allowing that to happen. And, and here we have in public statements that say, well, we're protecting this individual. I'm telling you, those things are wrong. And everybody sitting in front of me knows they're wrong. And so I asked you to take action on this. These are the types of things, they do, they do a number of things. First of all, we're trying to beat down our parents who are coming to us with real concerns. And second of all, I'll be honest with you. The school administration and this board are complicit with the indoctrination if you do nothing. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Locke. Last call for anybody else that wants to speak. Seeing none, we will move on. Consent agenda items. Superintendent Hensley.
Great. There are four items for your consideration on the consent agenda tonight. Executive session minutes of September 8th, 2025, general session minutes of that same date, the certified and classified personnel report and reimbursement for private transportation of isolated students.
Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. It's unanimous to me. Okay, we are down to reports and recommendations. Superintendent, you have some recommendations here.
Great. Tonight from the Wyoming Department of Education, a tooth, or sorry, a $25,000 cutting edge grant is recommended and that would be used for the CTE program at Kelly Walsh.
That is in action. We have to accept that because it's above the 25,000. So do I have a motion to accept that grant?
Oh, I'll make a motion to accept that grant.
I'll second.
All right. Any discussion on this grant?
A quick question. Did we apply for the grant? Did Kelly Walsh apply for the grant?
Yes, they do apply for that particular grant staff. Okay, thank you.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Another unanimous. Hey, we are down to other business, I believe. Donation appreciation. Oh, oh no, yeah, I skipped right over that. Guess I'm wanting to get out of here tonight. Mary, you have a BOSI's report for us.
I have the meeting minutes notes from the September 15th board meeting. I wasn't able to attend due to a family obligation. But any of the other board members that were there, if they, if I missed something, please tell me what I missed. But it was announced that Pete Van Houten, the interim vice president of academic affairs, was introduced to the board. He will now be the BOSI's co-facilitator for the Casper College this year. Amanda DeDiego then is the new acting dean of the U Dub Casper. She was at the meeting and introduced and she plans to attend consistently at the BOSI's meetings and looking more, looking forward to learning more about it. The finances, the board approved bills to be paid for September 2025, which totaled $113,849. The BOSI's current cash accounts totaled $978,166. The administration, BOSI's administration, the college is giving its employees a retention bonus of $2,000. And it was discussed if BOSI should pay the 2,000 for the BOSI's advisor position or if the college should pay. The board voted to pay the retention bonus. The policy, we will be doing a policy review. The board approved updates to the budget development policy. A few, few slight changes were made to update the contact information and no changes were made to the election of officers. Amy Rose reported, representing NCSD, she reported that she had the opportunity to meet with Pete Van Houten a few times to discuss BOSI's. They will be co-facilitating in that regard. Gina Pickett stepped in and went to the high schools for the concurrent enrollment period because Melissa was out of the office. And she shared the information with the board about the J Foundation and the work being done at the high schools for the mental health and suicide prevention program. Pete Van Houten, representing Casper College thanked Gina Pickett for stepping in and helping to do the concurrent enrollment period. He was also able to visit a Spanish class at KW to watch the concurrent enrollment process. Concurrent classes are college level classes taught at the high school, in the high school. So Casper College typically doesn't have as much involvement in that program. And so he's getting up to speed on how those work. And the college is looking into ways to refine the enrollment process and have had more college employees available to help the high school students. Gina, representing the BOSI's manager, she spoke about working to get the French class at NC articulated so that that will be a college level course as well. She sent out communications about concurrent enrollment processes to parents, students and teachers in classes, offering the college credit and sent additional communications to the parents and students in the. and sent additional communications to the parents and students in the Spanish classes about their enrollment process. High school visits the week of September eighth and divided her time evenly between KW and NC. She was in the high schools for four full days and presented 14 classes, including the eight Spanish classes to assist in enrollment. And we have completed the state of Wyoming auditors required training, and she passed the exam and completed the post-secondary education option program report for the Wyoming Community College Commission. Todd Milliken reported, he's the chair of the BOSI's committee. He reported that the college has been in contact with an attorney to discuss the BOSI's organizational issues. Dana Howie shared that NCSD number one has done the same, and it was suggested that the two attorneys meet to discuss the issues. Todd requested a report back next month, and it has been suggested that the bylaws should be amended. We have some glitches in our bylaws and we're working on it legally representing both entities on how to clean that up and make it more legal, for lack of a better term. In the next few months, the additional budget options will be reviewed. As of now, the FY26 budget looks, looks fine, and the board, we want to see how the revenue comes in this year before making any major changes to the funding model for the next year. And that's it.
Thank you. Any additions to that report? Thing done. Trustee Alvia, I believe you have one for us.
I do. The Natrona County Recreation Joint Powers Board, we had met on Friday, September 12th, where we reviewed multiple grant applications and some prior funding reports. We did award grants to these following agencies: ART 321, Big Brothers Big Sisters, the City of Casper Recreation Division, the Compete Casper Proud to Host the Best, David Street Station, Special Olympics Wyoming, and the Community Recreation Foundation. We also reviewed grant applications from some other agencies whose funding requests were not approved by us at this time due to one or multiple of these funding constraints, a need for additional information, or potentially outside our funding parameters. And it looks like we will again meet in December, so stay tuned.
Thank you. Now we're down to donation appreciation.
Great, so we would like to express our appreciation for the following donations. The Casper Unity and Solidarity Project, or CUSP, donated $1,758 to help pay down meal debt for students at Lincoln, Cottonwood, Midwest, and Roosevelt Schools. The Bighorn Audubon Society donated one copy of Wyoming Birds for Kids to every Natrona County School District Elementary School library. It was about $270.75 worth of books. And also wanted to mention that Qdubu did donate burritos. I talked about this last month, or last meeting, to NC, but they also donated those to Kelly Walsh to celebrate the first day of school. So again, we thank you for all of those who donate to our district.
Thank you, and we're down to trustee comments. I will start over with trustee Hopkins.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd just like to start with congratulations to Evansville and Pineview. And I just, I'm also going to thank everyone that's come to speak tonight. I'd like to hit on some of the points that were made. The mother that was just here that brought her son's picture, I think it's Hugo. I'm not sure, but I would really hope that there is an investigation into Cottonwood to see what's going on over there and the IEP students. Our constitution states that we are to serve all of our students and that all the students should have the access to schooling, and I hope that is taken care of, or an investigation. And I hope she's able to get some help for her child. Let's see here. So, about a trustee that was mentioned tonight. I do not, I do not condone any threats to our parents. We already hear, we were elected to serve our community. We are in, there is freedom of speech. I recognize that. But threats, I feel, are too far, and we should not be threatening parents that we are trying to serve and to support them. I'm not sure how that trustee will respond. We'll see when we get around the table here and what she has to say for herself. As for Charlie Kirk and the love that he had for people, he also believed in truth. The absolute truth, not a subjective truth. I would suggest everyone to maybe listen to what he was speaking about. I believe in absolute truths and not the subjective truths and in what's going on with our schools. That's what I have to say tonight.
Thank you, trustee Perrino.
Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. Congratulations to Pineview and Evansville. I'm incredibly proud of you. We had the opportunity to attend, opportunity, excuse me, to attend the Boys and Girls Club annual breakfast last week, and it was wonderful and appreciated being able to be there and seeing all the hard work and the dedication to our community. I don't have much to say tonight beyond, at times, it's quite difficult to be measured in our responses, especially when we see potential discrimination happening. Our district is welcoming to all students, faculty, and staff. We don't cherry pick who is here, and we abide by a non-discrimination policy. And I would also like to remind people that there is a non-discrimination ordinance in the city of Casper. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Bullwinder.
Well, I would also like to express my congratulations to Evansville and Pineview and to the teachers, staff, and students that worked so hard and accomplished so much. Last Wednesday, as was mentioned, was September 17th, the United States Constitution Day. Unfortunately, I and other trustees and the superintendent Hensley were invited to the event for the Boys and Girls Club breakfast. It was an outstanding event. We had the honor of hearing from the first woman to serve Wyoming's Congress, Barbara Cuban, and her two sons, and Governor Gordon, just to mention a few. The celebration recognized and awarded several students whose connection with the Boys and Girls Club significantly improved their lives. Thank you, Boys and Girls Club. In recognition of our Constitution Day last Wednesday, I want to read the First Amendment's Constitution. "Congress shall make no law respecting the establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof, or abridging the freedom of speech or press, or the right of the people to peacefully assemble and to petition the government for redress, a redress of grievances." "The separation of church and state, as laid out by the First Amendment, ensured that every student, every parent, every teacher, every American has the right to engage in whatever religion they want, or no religion." This was an important position of our founding fathers. What concerns me is when a clash occurs between religion and science. Our country's greatness was built in large part by science. Whether it's light bulbs, steam engines, cars, cameras, televisions, microwave ovens, computer technology, space exploration, and on and on. Science was, is, a crucial part to the development and progress of our country. So when teachers are criticized for the teaching of science that may conflict with someone's faith, it worries me. Galileo was held in house arrest for much of his life because he proposed that the sun does not orbit the earth. Can geologists teach the age of the earth? Can biologists teach evolution? Science is not always right, but it always does what it can to correct its mistakes and learn from them. If we are going to continue to lead the world, we have to lead with science. Let's support science. One final comment. Many of you have no idea how much trustee Hopkins, I'm sorry, I did it again, trustee Howie does for this district and its students. She is a caring, passionate person, has worked so hard. And for her to be criticized is troubling to me. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Schmidt.
At our last meeting, well, first I want to start with Ms. Hugo and your son. I hope and pray that he gets the help he needs, that you get the help that you want, and that you find a school solution that is best fitted for your son. Public schools can't fit every child. So if this doesn't fit, I pray and hope that you can find one that does. Because your child's emotional health and academic health is the most important thing, and that's what we should all be focused on. And now, at our last meeting, we vigorously debated the creation of a resolution that would mark the 250th anniversary of the Declaration of Independence. We ultimately came to a decision on what the resolution would look like. I did not ultimately vote for it because I felt it lacked the emphasis that is needed in celebrating such a momentous event in history. The public comment on the events that have occurred in the past couple of weeks has confirmed that we as a nation are lacking a true understanding of our country's guiding documents. The importance of not understanding through true thoughtful study will be the absolute downfall of this nation. In the Declaration of Independence, it clearly outlines the difference between monarchy that rules by the subjective order of the king and that of the absolute truth that man's rights are derived from their creator with uncertain, unalienable rights that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. As I read the preamble, the Declaration of Independence note that we no longer suffer from, and I quote, "a long train of abuses and usurpations pursuing invariably the same objective evens designed to reduce them under absolute deputism from our own government. But instead, we are teetering on suffering a long train of abuses that will reduce us to the absolute deputism by the citizens within our own country." And now, in honor of the 250th anniversary, I will read the Declaration of Independence preamble so that we, every, every meeting, I'm going to do something on history on the 250th anniversary, and this is my first. "The unanimous declaration of the thirteen United States of America, when in the course of human events it becomes necessary for one people to dissolve the political bands which have connected them with another, and to assume among the powers of the earth the separate and equal station to which the laws of nature and the natures God entitle them, a decent respect to the opinions of mankind requires that they should declare the causes which impel them to separation. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with uncertain, unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. That to secure these rights, governments are instituted among men, deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed. That whenever any form of government becomes destructive of these ends, it is the right of the people to alter or to abolish it and to institute new government, laying its foundation on such principles and organizing its powers in such form as to them shall seem most likely to affect their safety and happiness. Prudence indeed will dictate that government, long established, should not be changed for light and transient causes, and accordingly, all experience hath shown that mankind are more disposed to suffer while evils are sufferable than to right themselves by abolishing the forms to which they are accustomed. But when a long train of abuses and usurpations pursuing invariably the same object evences are designed to reduce them under absolute deputism, it is their right, it is their duty, to throw off such government and to provide new guards for the future security. Such has been the patient sufferance of these colonies, and such is now the necessity which constrains them to alter their former systems of government. The history of the present King of Great Britain is a history of repeated injuries and usurpations, all having the direct object, the establishment of absolute tyranny over these states." Thank you.
Thank you, trustee True Wells.
Good evening. Thank you to everyone who showed up tonight. I appreciate you taking time and alerting us to your concerns. Thank you. A lot has happened since our last meeting. I attended the work-based learning meeting at the State Capitol with my ongoing commitment to the RIDE initiative. It was a wonderful get-together to discuss how and why we need more encouragement, exposure, and experience in structured workplace environments. I was very excited to see Dr. Gilbar there as well. While there, while there, we chatted about the upcoming changes to the profile of a graduate from the State Board of Education. The profile of a graduate is a thorough re-imagining view of the student's progress through schooling as a bridge to adulthood. Rather than being a checkbox to-do list, the profile highlights four areas. Learning, work exposure, how to contribute to society, and how to personally thrive. It is harder to understand than a simplistic checklist, but it provides a better and more realistic picture of what it takes to be a thriving and productive member of the Wyoming society, of Wyoming society in this century. I look forward to knowing if the governor signs the changes and how it will impact Natrona County School District graduates. Congratulations to all of our schools on a very positive report from the state. Evansville and Pineview, so many kudos go to you. You, teachers, admin, staff, parents, and students, worked very hard and are reaping the benefits. Congratulations. To the other schools, keep at it. Progress is slow. Students and parents, dig in and do the hard work of learning. You are vital partners in our efforts to get all students where they need to be on the next step of their life journey. Community members, keep encouraging those students and parents that you know. Every little bit helps and makes us all stronger. With that, thank you also to our donors. These gifts matter. Know that. I'm also looking forward to attending a statewide We the People conference in Sheridan on Friday. I know that we have some exceptional teachers who are already using this nationally-recognized and supported program. Hopefully, I will see some of them there. On a more somber note, as the multitude of shootings that happened in the last two weeks, the political violence that has targeted both sides of our political divide, and the nefarious actors who are trying to use these incidences to make things worse, I reject your efforts. Should you feel the pull of hate propaganda towards others, towards your neighbors, resist. I remind you of the words that Alan Simpson used to give us. Hate rots the container that it is carried in. Also, Maya Angelou, it is very hard to hate someone if you look them in the eye and recognize them as a human being. I will continue to work for the betterment of our community. To those out there who are trying to make us better, my heart breaks for all of us. But I encourage you to keep working with kindness, grace, and humility. It does not have to be this way. We can ask for better. We are working here to make our community better through quality education accessible for everyone. It is one of the few places that brings in all types of people, where we can learn from one another. If we can make our district education better, our community will be better. Join us in rejecting hate and violence. Help us do better. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Stedelijk.
Thank you, Chair. Congratulations to Evansville and Pineview Elementary Schools. Wow, well done. What you do for your students.
We could hear you anyway.
Thank you very much. People in the back, do I need to repeat that, or were you able to hear me? You heard me. All right, very good. What you do for your students and by extension- What you do for your students, and by extension, all of Natrona County, is absolutely beyond You have our admiration and the appreciation of all of us. Thank you so much. Well done. Bravo. And to the young lady who spoke and gave us the positive and inspirational report of the Gear Up program, very well done. I concur with trustee Hopkins that the matter discussed by the parent concerning her child does need to be investigated, and I have every faith that the district will do that to the best of their abilities. I especially thank trustee Schmidt for reading the first few sentences of the Declaration of Independence. Dare I presume to request that we will hear the preamble of the Constitution in a future meeting? I hope we do. How many of you remember learning how to diagram sentences in English class and could still do it today? Ah, you could. Very good. My seventh-grade English Social Studies teacher in Scottsbluff, Nebraska, Doris Bergren, taught us these wonderful statements of philosophy found in the Declaration and the preamble and the entire Constitution by concurrently teaching us how to diagram their sentences. Ask yourself if you could do that today. It was quite an exercise, but it really helped us learn what those things, those wonderful documents, absolutely had to say. I also concur with and echo trustee Petrino's comments regarding nondiscrimination policies, practices, and laws. Thank you for bringing those up and reminding us. I also echo and applaud trustee Bolander's comments regarding trustee Howie. I have every faith, support, and admiration in trustee Howie's past and continued service to the Natrona County School District and the staff and children of our communities. Thank you very much, trustee Truewells, for quoting Mike Simpson Sullivan, Sullivan. Pardon? Alan Simpson. Thank you. Well, they're both great guys. I just combined the two. And especially the wonderful poetess Maya Angelou. I will conclude by looking toward the future. Since we were speaking of the First Amendment, October 5th through 11th is the annual Banned and Challenged Book Week, sponsored by the American Library Association. Look it up. Find the list of the top 10 or top 100 banned and challenged books over the last few years. The theme of this year's Banned and Challenged Book Week is "Censorship Is So, 1984." Read for your rights. Thank you, trustee Christopherson. That concludes my comments.
Thank you, trustee Howie. It's your turn.
Thank you, trustee Christopherson, and I'd also like to thank you for mentioning what a hard week it's been on account of Charlie Kirk's death and how hard it is to wrap our heads around that. I'm really proud of the two schools that were honored tonight, and there's another one coming. I can't believe we have three exceeding schools in one year. I have to mention that before I go on. I think it takes a lot of courage to live in this world right now and everything that's going on, and I also think it takes a lot of courage to live specifically in Wyoming sometimes. I was born and raised here, and it sure seems to be a different place than it was when I was growing up. I know what my fears are, and one of the biggest ones for me is that people who are different from us, maybe from many, will not be treated well, and that some people will try to stop them from being able to be who they are, be themselves, which is their inalienable right in this country, at least in theory. In regard to a comment I made on a Facebook page a while back about a post on a parent's thread who was very upset about a transitioning custodian at one of our elementary schools, I was very upset to see how this mom was going after the custodian, as if their very being was not allowed around her child. I believe I said something to the effect of, "God help her or me the next time I see her." Sounds like some people decided that was a threat. Well, if you know me, you know I'm not a threat to anyone. I can't even stand to put out mousetraps that will kill mice, I'm sorry. I move bugs outside rather than kill them, and I would certainly never hurt another human being. Well, God did help me, and He made me realize that this woman is fearful for her child, afraid that her child might be exposed to something out of the realm of their religion, maybe, or afraid of some kind of undue influence. Only she knows that. But her fear came out in anger, and mine did too. And for that, I deeply apologize, although my comment wasn't even to her on her thread. It was on the page of a former parent of the same school who knew the custodian, liked the custodian, and was very concerned that the anger of the parent would hurt that person in some way. As trustee Schmidt has often said, we are all entitled to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Couldn't we all try to cut the people around us some slack and let people be who they are? Wyoming is hard enough to live in right now because people are way less tolerant of each other than they used to be. You don't have to agree with everyone, but can't we all be a little bit more tolerant and accepting of each other? And now that I've figured out one of my biggest fears, I'm going to work on it. The Wyoming I grew up in was, as they say, a small town with long streets. We help each other. We are kind to each other. We care for each other. Please. I will if you will.
Thank you, trustee Alvey. No comment. Did I miss anybody? I guess it's down to me. I just want to, once again, I wish I was an orator like you so I could express myself. I can't. It's just, I don't know, guys, this is Casper, Natrona County, Wyoming. I was born and raised here. I'm going to die here. And I just don't like what this internet sensational crap has done to us. I mean, we had a state representative get up in front of us last week and admit that she didn't know what she was talking about, make accusations that weren't true, and she got it off of a post off the internet, and we all know the internet is always right, right? Nobody ever lies. We always know reporters are always right. I have been reported on maybe 50 times in my life, even for really good things that I've done, and I've never had a reporter get it 100% right, and they won't let you go back and read it before it's posted, and you're always like, wow, I wish I would have got to proofread this because this, you know? So, I mean, cut each other some slack. I have worked alongside Dana. We got elected together 12 years ago, 14, I can't remember. That woman has integrity. Many times, we don't agree, and sometimes we're on the different end of the politics, you know, but there is absolutely no stain on her heart or her soul. She's a good woman. And as for being threatened by her, sometimes I worry about her because she can't stand up, and she's got some good health issues, but she's not threatening anybody. And, you know, if you're the type of person that wants to see a threat, you're going to see a threat. If you're looking for a threat, you're going to see it because we're all like that. We tend to see what we expect to see. And I just would like us to go back to expect to see the best in each other, to love each other. I mean, quit this bickering. I mean, what happened to Charlie was absolutely horrendous, and it's just changed me. I just, I'm tired of the fighting. I'm just tired of the internet bullshit. Somebody accused me I should have read. I didn't even read the article. It's like, I am not in there right now because I want to separate. I was hunting the last three days, had some of the best days of my life with my nephew and his son, and talking to elk, and it just, what a wonderful thing to do to get away from it and pray on the top of a mountainside and just try to not have those bad feelings in my heart. So I just ask you and the audience, anybody that can, spend some time away from the phone, away from the articles, away from all of that BS, and get re-centered in your life and figure out what's important. Family, kids, we're all here because we know that children are our next generation, and they are what's important, and I've given a lot of my time for those kids, and we have so many success stories. This is a great district, and we have great employees, and there's always a problem, and if you want to see that problem, if you want to concentrate on that problem, that's all you're going to see, and that's all I want to say is, God bless America and thank God that we live in Casper, Wyoming, so, Superintendent.
So, as always, I would like to, it's not time for public comment.
Mr. Chairman, my name is Jamie Lean, and I am not a liar. State law is compelled speech, and that is a law effective July 1st of this year.
This is not public comment. Would you please?
I will not be called a liar. State law came into effect July 1st of this year. Compelled speech is a law.
Would you please be quiet? Thank you.
All right, so, back to the beginning of the meeting, I do always like to celebrate, excuse me, our exceeding schools, and as we've said already, we have more schools to celebrate, so I'm looking forward to that. Also want to celebrate the work that's happening with the J Foundation in our high schools. It is very, very important work. I'm wearing my J boots today to help celebrate that also. So, the foundation was with Kelly Walsh and Midwest last week. We'll be at NC, working with NC students as well as Roosevelt students this week. So, again, great work happening there, and thank you to all of the community support that makes that happen. Your next meeting will be October 13th at 6:00 right here at Central Services.